We'll call the October 2nd meeting to order with a moment of silent meditation, please. All right. Have a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pride of the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we'll have a motion for adoption of the agenda.
A motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. All right. Who's second?
Second.
Motion by Darrell that we adopt the agenda as approved, as written. Secretary by Nancy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Now we have the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same move.
All right. Second?
Second.
Motion by Richie Burke, Secretary Eddie Mann, that we approve the consent agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. I'm gonna start it off, then I'm gonna leave the rest of the meeting up to James. We have tonight a presentation, a short presentation on the water quality testing program of Shallowback Bay. I saw the program, I think some of y'all did, at a workshop one night, and I was really impressed because I had heard so much about Shallowback Bay and being really polluted, rotten water, couldn't drink, couldn't swim, and couldn't do nothing until our water director gave his program, and I asked for it to be shown tonight because it will be shown on TV also, and it'll give you a fair representation of Shallowback Bay and the non-polluting of Shallowback Bay. I did not know it was being done. I was quite impressed. And Manio has its own testing program, and then they send it on to the state, and the state tests it at the same time. So it's a pretty accurate presentation tonight. So Josh, if you will. Yeah. Are you ready?
I think the video is queued up.
Okay. I thought you wanted to get up here and say a few words.
I'll be available for questions.
Okay. That'll roll.
Once a week, two Town of Manio employees meet for a boat ride. This boat ride serves an important purpose.
Good morning.
Fifty-two weeks a year, qualified town staff conduct water quality sampling in Shallowback Bay. Subject to the weather year-round, staff coordinate to make the trip as safe as possible. Samples in the bay consist of four sampling parameters. Temperature, dissolved oxygen, salinity, and pH. Samples are taken at five dedicated locations throughout the bay. Here they are, at sample location one. Sample probes and meters are assembled. Rugged probes provide sample information to the meter. Samples are taken at one-foot intervals throughout the water column. The first series is taken one foot from the seabed. Each of the four results are recorded. The second series is taken at two feet from the bottom. Each reading is recorded and will later be submitted to the North Carolina Division of Water Resources by way of monitoring reports. The third series is taken three feet from the bottom. Twelve readings are recorded at each sampling location. Sixty total readings are recorded for each boat ride weekly. Observing proper sampling techniques, the rest of the boat ride is repetition.
Anyhow, it's very short, but I'm gonna allow, if you don't mind, for anybody who would like to ask Josh any questions or answers. I'd like for you to really see this as I did because I was certainly surprised. I had heard all my life that Shallowback Bay was polluted, and you couldn't do anything in it, and stay out of it, and everything. Well, that is not the case according to Josh. So if you have any questions, one at a time, or we should ask them, if you don't, we'll move on.
Could we get just a little report on how the condition of the water?
Well, ask him. Ask him. There he is.
Good evening, Josh O'Brien, Water and Sewers. So, your question?
I'd just like to know a little bit about it, because I've always heard what the mayor is telling us. There are signs out there saying that the meeting...
Correct. I think I can answer the question first by saying, our bay is rated as S.C. waters. S.A. waters is swimmable waters. So our water is S.C. water, which is why those signs are there. We have our wastewater treatment plant that discharges into Shallowback Bay, that is, the mayor was saying. For years, the wastewater treatment plant has been compliant, 100%, with EPA and state permit limits that they set. We have not had a violation in over eight years. We don't like to brag, but we take a lot of pride in it. It's a very complicated process, but, you know, if you have a more detailed question, maybe I can answer it a little better.
I don't think I really understand.
Okay.
I need to be detailed.
Yes, ma'am.
So, kids who have done this work, coming off the bridge, is it safe? Is the water safe down for them to be in it? I mean, I grew up swimming there, so...
I've actually jumped off the bridge as well, if that says anything. But I attest, I think some of the commissioners here have drank the water, believe it or not. It's clear, it's not rated to drink. Wastewater treated is not rated to drink. That's not what I'm saying. But, you know, we take a lot of pride in the treatment process. We try to go above and beyond what's required. We don't do a lot of plant tours, but, you know, we are available for plant tours if people would like to come up and see.
So what steps do we need to start taking going forward with our Shallowback Bay? How can we even make that?
There's always...
You got the community to come do, as well as the town to start it?
Absolutely. I believe the board has been looking at this for years on how to improve the quality in Shallowback Bay. Recent improvements to the stormwater system downtown have helped with the oil and grease separators that were installed, also with the plant. The permit is there, governed by the EPA and North Carolina Department of Water Resources, to make sure that we adhere to certain standards. That's why we have the permit. It's a plant that has been there for, I believe, almost 30 years. So, working with the board going forward, there will be some infrastructure improvements that will be proposed through capital improvements.
The town does have kind of plan in place going forward, too.
And this is part of... Correct. This is part of our manager's process going forward, that we're getting, reaching out to professional engineers, department heads, manager, and the board, going forward to plan a five-year CIP, which is part of our asset inventory and assessment program that we received our grant from the state for the wastewater system. We just recently, excuse me, applied for the asset inventory and assessment grant for the water side as well. So that's a big part of what we're looking to do for the future. Yes?
I was told that the signs, the warning signs that were freaked out when it was deserved, were required because there is a wastewater treatment system there. Is that correct?
I can't speak to the history of why the signs were put there. It was before my time as utility superintendent.
Well, I was told that that was something there was nothing we could do anything about because... That was a stain.
As far as I'm aware, with my regulations, I'm not required to put those signs there. But of course, you know, we run the utility, we run the plant, we run the collection system, and of course, the water system.
So I can hear you.
That's just something that we'll have to go through the process, but I am unaware, nor was, you know, I'm part of the process in putting the signs down there. But again, it's not S.A. waters, it's not rated for swimming. Correct.
Are we still discharging gray water from the plant into Shallowback?
We discharge treated water every day. About, on average, a 300,000 gallons of treated water that we treat are municipal.
Even the plants on the other side of the...
No, ma'am. Just inside Incorporated Manio.
Oh, okay.
The waste that comes from our houses and our businesses goes up to our treatment plant, and then it looks like swimming pool water before it's discharged. So I can say with 100% confidence, in my time, which is over 13 years, that that water is, look like swimming pool water, and it continues to look like that. And if it doesn't, we will immediately notify the state, of course, the manager, and the public. Yes, ma'am.
It has appeared to me that there's not much monitoring, and I could be wrong, about the folks docked downtown. Some of them have those fancy systems like they do, but I don't think they all do.
And again, that's not my area of expertise, but I'm sure that could be brought up with the applicable department head.
Wait, wait. You're gonna be, I don't know if it's tonight, but it's gonna be explained, under the new ordinance that our town attorney worked on and just had passed. There's a new ordinance, a Shallowback Bay ordinance, and that, you're talking about sewerage on boats, which a lot of people have been in the past unloading in the bay, but that'll be stopped after we pass this ordinance. But that's all I'm gonna say about that. That'll come up. It's in the mail, and it's working fast. Somebody else back here, anybody? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Post the actual results of your data on your website so we can actually see the numbers.
That's a very good question. We do, we just reported our 2018, 2019 wastewater performance report.
That's for the sewer plant.
That's for the sewer plant.
The little sampling that you took out of Shallowback Bay. Is that part of that, is different sampling?
It's all public record and is available. It's not part of our annual report, just because, as it said in the video, it's 60 results per day.
Is that part of sampling that you took, is that available on your website so we can actually look at the numbers?
Not on the website, but it's available through a public information request. It would be a lot of data, and we can look at that. Yep. Any other questions?
All right. Thanks, Josh.
Yes.
I just thought, it was very informative to me and informational, and I thought I'd pass it on, and I hope everybody in Manio sees it through TV, that what we've been hearing in the past is not quite accurate. There are certain days, I'm sure, it might be a little worse than others, but overall, we still have good water in Shallowback Bay, and we'll just move on. I'm gonna pass it over to James and let him take the meeting and go with it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six on the agenda, public comment. This agenda item is for information. Members of the public are invited to address the board of commissioners on any topic. Action on items brought up during the public comment period will be at the discretion of the board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium and identify yourself so that your statements can be recorded.
Good evening. I'm here for the second time before the board. My name's Meredith Midget. I own the property at either 206 or 506 Essex. The county has me under both numbers. I was at the board meeting on June the 5th about the curb cut for this residence on Essex Street. I asked for both curb cuts to remain. A few days later, actually, three days later, we met with Ms. Dickerson and Mr. Ayers in a room here at Town Hall and discussed how to resolve the problem. We were told the cut closest to Devon Street would be eliminated. We asked for a 24-foot cut on Essex Street. After 17 weeks, I got a letter from Ms. Dickerson, which was dated September the 17th, stating that the size of the Essex Street cut would only be 16 feet. Not big enough for a large van if somebody's trying to move in and out, and if you drive in, then you've got to back out, so you need some room. I feel that, once again, I'm being singled out, held to a different standard. Supposedly, after a thorough review, the Essex Street cut would be only 16 feet, not the 24 we had requested. I do understand about development, rules, and all that I ask is that I be treated fairly and consistently with other properties with curb cuts. Once again, I actually feel that I'm being singled out and held to a different standard. If the curb cut has to be closed due to arbitrary enforcement actions by the employees and staff here, I again ask for additional consideration for a 24-foot cut at least. Only two houses down from my house, there is a 38-foot curb cut, which is, I'm asking for the 24-foot curb cut, which is consistent with your zoning ordinance, section 13-2A. Is this demand another inconsistent enforcement placed on me alone, and me alone? Maybe it's because of influential neighbors or other people influencing the board, or people on the board. Please direct your staff to cease and desist any action for now and reconsider my requests for at least a 24-foot curb cut, per your ordinance regulations. Hopefully, it won't take over three months more to get an answer, and I still have the arbitration board consideration in my mind if it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name's Catherine Fagan. I'm here about the zoning request, changes that have been made by, I understand it's Saga. When they first applied for this, they had been approved for a small boutique hotel, and they knew what they were getting. Now they want to go bigger. I understand that the Elizabethan Inn has been asking for changes, and they're on the other side of the highway where you could accommodate more square footage, and they have been shut down year after year after year. They would love to tear part of that down and build a small hotel, maybe a small Hilton or something, and have three stories, but they've not been able to do that. Now they're, I can't believe that the town would now be considering allowing Saga to change the plans that they had for downtown on the water. You know, what people come here for is to see the little historic town on the water. They don't want to come and see a bunch of fancy buildings. They come for the little shops, and they come for the little boutiques, and they come to walk on the water. That's what they come for. They don't want to see a big hotel on the water. But that's not to say that hotels aren't necessary, aren't needed, and would not benefit the shop owners and everybody who's down here. But they should be on the other side of the highway, you know, where Duke of Deer is. Why aren't we doing something about that property? You know, that could be, you know, for one thing, it looks, it looks bad right now. It is fairly derelict looking. It's got trees growing out of the swimming pool. You know, why don't we make that, why don't we somehow motivate the owners to do something with that property, as opposed to doing anything down on the water and blocking our view? Let me see. The other problem with building large buildings is, we are in an evacuation zone, and that's going to just get more critical with climate change, with the way we're having more storms, we're having more flooding. And if there's an evacuation, and you've got a bunch of big buildings down here, a bunch of hotels, how are you gonna get everybody out of town? You can't even get into town. I was working in Greenville today, and I'm coming in from the west, and I had to, I went over the new bridge and went, "Holy Moses." Said, "I'm not going in that line." You couldn't even get into town. I did a U-turn and went back around and came over the old bridge. So what are we gonna do if he's building big hotels downtown? You're ruining the view. You're, we don't, we're an island. We don't have the means to build more and bigger highways, and do we really even want them anyway if we could? And I wonder how many people in the audience are in favor of this building? Can I get a show of hands? Who wants the zoning changes? Anybody in favor of them? How many people are against the zoning changes? And I'll leave it there with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the public comment period that sits open to any topic, either on the agenda or any other topic beyond the agenda.
Hi, I'm Bill Houston. I live at 209 Compton Street, and I have concerns with the wording of the amendments on the zoning. The way that I'm reading it, and it may not be the intent, but the way that I'm reading it, is it removes all restrictions on hotels, so there would be no square footage requirements for them. I think that's a dangerous thing to do. It's a, you know, we don't want extremely large. I understand that the, what's in the Marshes Light plan is there, and I'm fine with that. That's what we bought into. The other thing that would be helpful on the height changes that's in there, it specifies where it's measured to, but it does not give a definition of where you start the measurement from. So it really, in my mind, doesn't tell me anything on where it's gonna be measured. So I think it would be helpful to clarify that if you're gonna make these changes. Thank you.
Jason Borland. I live at 305 Fernando, and full disclosure, I own the Roanoke Island Inn, so I'm right there by the, by where these proposed changes are. And I think you said something very interesting, which was what we bought into. And that's what, that's what everybody bought into feel like, and I think everyone's gotten worked up, that we haven't necessarily followed the process, or it's felt, it's felt a little bit dirty. But I do want to be, I was reminded today, this is a good thing. I think what we bought into, that original plan and how that makes Marshes Light, extension to downtown that adds to the character, not huge high rises with undisclosed square footage, that's great, and I think everybody's excited for that. But, you know, I said to somebody, you know, "You danced with the girl you brought today." And undisclosed square footage, putting it in with churches and other nonprofits, I think is how you categorize it, it doesn't feel good. And I think, again, we got away from the process, so. But I do, again, I was reminded that if we do, if we dance with the girl we brought, then it's, it's something that adds to the town and adds value to everybody, so. That's all I got.
They probably brought us the boutique back.
Yes, ma'am. Apparently brought the boutique hotel, so that works.
Good evening. Bill Massey here in Manio. When I first heard the discussion about the ordinance change, my immediate thought was, well, that is the town and Marshes Light. And so that decision would be made by others. Then I came to understand, either rightly or wrongly, and you will help correct me, that changing B2 for one request changes B2 for all requests, so that the whole B2 area would be changed, and what applies to the specific request would then be available to anything in the B2 area. And I think that just, in my mind, raised the point that, well, this is my concern, as well as the concern of others. This is, to me, one of the benefits of tonight and other meetings being televised, that more citizens may be aware of the importance of the decision that's going to be the conversation and the decision that will be taken according to them. So thank you very much for the comment, public comment opportunity, and I'm very much interested in learning more about the changing of the entire B2 section. Thank you.
I'm Jackie Myers. I live in Marshes Light. One of my comments is way outside of my neighborhood. I have talked to a lot of people, and a few, about, is there a need for more accommodations on Roanoke Island to increase tourism? I have spent my life working on the beach in property management, and people come for the beach. Manio is not a family vacation destination for large families. But if you look on VRBO, Vacation Rental by Owner, Airbnb, and I talked to one of my neighbors who owns several of those properties, as well as, of course, the Tranquil House Inn, if you go online, there are a lot of places to rent for a family, or individuals, or couples, for a week even with a house, or just a short stay. And so while we know there can be, there will be... And so while we know there can be, there will be, a inn at Marshes Light, if the justification for building large hotels, which we don't even know what they're asking for as far as size, in different places on Roanoke Island, if the excuse is, "We need more place for tourists to stay," somebody needs to investigate that, and if you just speak with the tourism, Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, they will give you statistics that don't prove that.
Thank you.
My name's Tim Teepol. I live at 101 Fernando Street. And knowing firsthand from somebody who helped develop, had started to develop that property, and know that Marshes Light was built to bring the old town with the new town. And when Marshes Light got brought up as to be a development, that's what it first started to be. It was supposed to be a small area where the area's already been built up on the platforms to have affordable housing above the shops. Yes, there's supposed to be a small hotel as well. And yes, things have changed. You know, there was a change at part of the thing, at part of the, one part of the condos, which are now houses. However, this is a major change. And originally, when everybody bought into Marshes Light, and when that development first began, it was always supposed to bring the old town of Manio to the new environment with businesses underneath, a small hotel to remain just like what old-time Manio is like. So therefore, the restrictions and the ordinance change, I do not understand, because originally everybody knew from Marshes Light what they were getting into. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
It's me again, Beebe Woody, Whiteo' Inn. Born and raised here. And I guess tonight I'd like to talk a little bit about planning. You know, I served on the planning board for many, many years. And during that time, we talked about trying to look ahead and plan for what our community wanted in the way of lodging. We were unable to complete that planning, or even to get into it, because at that time, nobody thought it was that important. We had what we had, and it wasn't going to grow, because we were just a day trip destination. In trying to encourage that, so that we would be able to look at this and not make it a crisis situation, but have our plans in place of what we really wanted in the way of lodging, it would be much better, I think. And I think the planning needs to be done before we go making major changes to our zoning ordinances for height and footprints. I have brought in a number of architects that I've known throughout the state who have gone down with me, and I have asked for their opinion. You know, look at the building that we have down there where we made the exception. And everybody says that was a mistake. Even those who were in favor of it and worked to see it happen now admit that that height and footprint was a mistake. And every architect that I have brought in to look at that situation in there has said, "What you have done is you have walled off the town from your waterfront. We don't want that. We want..." And being a bed-and-breakfast owner, I would be the first to say, "Yes, we do need more lodging, because we are no longer a day trip. We are a destination." I know a lot of people don't want to admit it. We are, and we need to prepare for that. But we also need to create that balance, and maintaining that balance where we don't destroy what we have, but also look to the future and good development. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Malcolm Feering from Manio. And first, I'd like to welcome Mr. Gupta to Manio, and I mean that sincerely. The comments that I have to make are nothing personal. I've seen a project that you've done recently with affordable housing. I think it's a nice project, and it's an asset to our community. Hope that don't count against me in the time. But what I want to talk about is something a little bit different, and that's process. And this project started in 2004. My guess is there has been a loss of memory, or it has been with me, on what the original conditional use permit was. It's been transferred, I think, 2006, and it was recently transferred again. I think the consistency in the permit has stayed the same. There's certain things that are required, recorded in the courthouse that are to be done. What's coming for you all tonight is a request for a text amendment for a height limitation, or I understand it, and for, I think, buildings exceeding 20,000 square feet. And I'm not going to get this done in three minutes, but you all have an agreement with the original developer, the 2006 developer, and then Mr. Gupta. Now, should Mr. Gupta be given some consideration, because he deserves to make money. I don't have any problems with that at all. He's not a person in this room that's not going to make money. I don't fault him for that. But what I want to talk about is the process. And this is going to be uncomfortable. Mr. Booth, you have been involved in this process representing the developers. And I'm not saying you're a bad person or anything, so please don't take it that way. And I don't have any indication that I'm trying to be offensive to you. But I don't think it's fair to this town that you sit as council for the developers in the past and for this town board. Because my guess is Christine's going to look down at you, and is it okay, white? And you're going to shake your head, and she's going to say, "Okay, but it's okay with whites, good with men." But it's not good with, it's not good. The permit was transferred to a development company, ML, Marshes Light Partners, or ML, whoever it is. I don't think without, with a review of compliance with permit, and that's a requirement, and you were involved in that. You had some representation in that. Rule 1.7, 1.7, the Town Code, I mean, the State Bar, and this is important, I'd like to yield a little bit of time to Mr. Booth, just a minute. Mandates that each affected client give informed consent, and that conformity is in writing. Throughout the history, the recent history of the town, from former commissioners, former planning board members, the town, planning board itself, have questioned the ethical standings in this review process. And what I hope the town does is seek outside counsel. And by that, I'm accusing you.
Malcolm, Malcolm, I'm sorry, but you've extended your time.
Can you speak as, by behalf of Marshes Light, as a group, and get to my next?
Not tonight. This is public comment period, ma'am, and you will have plenty of time to talk at a later date. Ma'am, you asked me a question, I'm trying to answer it. There will be a public hearing, there'll be plenty of public hearings, and everybody will get, say, if you want to talk an hour, you'll have time to do that at a later date. But not tonight. I think somehow this got out of hand a little bit, and the town manager's going to explain what's going on, what happened, and maybe you'll be satisfied, maybe you want. I can't help that. But we're going to stick by the rules, I can assure you, as long as I'm mayor. Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard?
Hello, good evening. My name is Sue McGoo. There was Saga Construction. I actually wasn't aware of this meeting. I just found out about it about a few hours ago, and I'm glad I came tonight. I just want to give you a little background of how, where this text amendment came from, right or wrong. We purchased the property, I, it was available for sale, we purchased the property. It came with certain entitlements, as far as a 60-room boutique inn. And I understand what we were getting ourselves into. Has someone said, "The girl brought to the dancer," or something like that? I understand. Let me, our plan is to do a boutique hotel there. We want to do a nice boutique hotel there. We're sticking to 60 rooms and three stories. There was two things, I started designing a hotel there. There's two things that came. Right now, there's a 20,000-square-foot limitation, and we came to 24,000. That 4,000 spread over three stories right there. There is a marginal increase in the footprint. There's a change there. We're still within lot coverage, and we're well within lot coverage of the conditional use permit. My purpose for doing that was not to get more rooms, but I wanted to make the rooms nicer. We searched a lot of different rooms. I wanted to have a little couch in the room, a place to sit, because people don't come for just one night, two nights. So that's how the square footage came to 24,000-something. The height, we weren't trying to get an extra story. The height right now is calculated from the ground. We have to lift the hotel up about six feet. So the way height is calculated, you lose six feet. And I was already worried about a three-story hotel and, you know, being, again, in the effort to do a nice hotel, we wanted to have, you know, nine-foot ceilings, nine-and-a-half-foot ceilings versus eight-foot ceilings. And when you factor in the mechanical rooms and stuff, we went back and came to about six feet more, seven feet more we needed. So those are the two things that I wanted to do. I prefer to keep it all in the cup, first of all, and not go into any type of town-wide amendment, because obviously, that's the bigger change. And some of the concern was that, it was advised to us by talking to the town that they didn't see a legal way to do that, even though our attorneys had a different opinion on that. We said, "Fine, no problem. I'm just trying to get to this point. Let's do a text amendment." I think the text amendment, now that I'm hearing it, is not, wasn't presented right. We went, there's a 20,000-square-foot limitation, and it excludes hotels and, sorry, not hotels, churches and government buildings and things like that. So we just thought that was a way to have the minimum change to it to accommodate this right here. But it had no limitation above that, so I understand that. Anyway, I just wanted to explain that, and I appreciate your comments, and I don't, those are the two things that we were trying to accomplish, we're still trying to accomplish, right or wrong. I think it could be written a little better.
Thank you, Mr. Gupta. I was trying to let you finish your sentence, but we're trying to stick to the three-minute rule. We do have a timer, and that is no fault of mine, the timer's three minutes. So, does anyone else like to be heard? All right, I'm going to close the public comment period. Comment period is now closed, and turn it back over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7, Old Business. 7A is for information purposes. This is an update on the Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan with maximum of $500,000 loan forgiveness and 0% interest for financing the waterfront lift station. Now, as background on this particular item, the Board of Commissioners has taken an action orientation in terms of infrastructure. They have directed us as staff to work on key infrastructure, including but not limited to areas such as sewer, water, stormwater, and related improvements throughout the town. Now, concurrent with that, in terms of taking care of this infrastructure, they've also, we've been directed to do it in a cost-effective manner, in a way which reduces the burden on the taxpayers and ratepayers of the jurisdiction. So I'm pleased to report that the state has accepted our application. This was one that was, the reason it's under Old Business is this was under a resolution approved by the Board of Commissioners in previous months. And we now have, from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, our initial letter of intent to fund, and this will include 1.106,660, and the purpose of this is to build a brand-new waterfront lift station. So this is a piece of infrastructure in one of the most vulnerable places of town. In addition, this particular one helps not only public health and our sewer system itself, but also protects public health, as we heard things about the Shallow Bag Bay earlier. It's also important to note that this waterfront lift station isn't just replacing like-for-like the lift station that's currently there and is at the end of its useful life. It will actually be a hardened system that will be more resistant to storm surge. It will also have a built-in generator system that, when the power goes out, will be able to keep that system going when the water comes back down. Now, that's the infrastructure part. On the finance part, I'm very pleased to note that the loan itself, we were given the maximum amount of grant, it's called loan forgiveness. So half a million dollars of this will be forgiven when we finish the lift station and prove we've got it done. Then the remaining 600,000 and change will be financed at 0% interest over a 20-year period. So it's about the best deal I could possibly think of, where we get a million-one worth of lift station for 600,000 at 0% interest. So I'm pleased to report this both to the mayor and the commissioners, as well as the public at large, as we work on, working on replacing and maintaining key infrastructure for this jurisdiction.
All right. The most important thing about that is it will help clean up Shallow Bag Bay. All right. Go ahead.
Yes. Item number 7B on the agenda. This is for action. This is discussion and consideration of zoning text amendment 2019-01Z, Section 7-5, subsection 19, and 2019-02Z, Section 8-5, subsection 42, to allow tattoo parlors in zoning districts B1 and B2. The applicant in this case is Mr. Jason Schultz.
There are several points to me, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I just, I know they could not be here tonight, and they had sent an email asking for our consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner, and it's a wonderful segue. It's, in general, the applicant would represent themselves at a meeting, but in this case, the applicant had allowed the tabling and continuance of this particular matter, so there'd be opportunity for more public comment regarding this proposed zoning text amendment. So if I may, I will read the letter to the mayor and commissioners from the applicant. It says, "Dear Mayor and Commissioners, regretfully, Courtney and I will not be able to attend this Wednesday night's meeting due to a family conflict. We are asking for your consideration for amending the B1 and/or B2 zoning to allow for a future tattoo parlor. The town of Manio has always supported all art forms, from outdoor dramas to varying galleries and studios. Tattoos are just another form of art and personal expression. In today's world, tattoos are extremely common for all ages and genders, and no longer have the negative stigma they once did. Instead, tattoos are living memorials, hiding physical scars, or just pure art. Allowing a tattoo parlor in the town of Manio would be another avenue to bring tourists and locals into our unique town." and locals into our unique town. One of the things we love most about Manio is how it embraces diversity and the arts, and this is just another way to continue that trend. While we want to preserve the history and charm of Manio, we would also like to see the town evolve so our community can prosper. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Jason Schultz." So, those are the words of the applicant in this matter. Now, there are a couple of things to go over and to try and give a full understanding of what they're asking. In the first section, in the Village Business District in B1, the current zoning ordinance allows the following conditional uses: bed and breakfast establishments, hotels, motels, similar, multifamily dwelling units in a mixed-use, retail, restaurants, temporary seasonal food vendors, convenience stores without fuel pumps, service, such as barber beauty shops, et cetera, offices, banks, boat manufacturing less than 3,000 square feet, libraries, museums, art galleries, social fraternal clubs, indoor athletic and exercise facilities, movie theaters, rentals for water-oriented recreation, police stations, traditional waterman activities, host offices, municipal buildings and facilities, funeral home, taxi operation, subdivisions, marina, farm and produce, event home, craft distillery, and pawn shops. That is the list of conditional uses in the B1 Village Business District. That was the first part of their first request. The second part of the request was for the B2 General Business District, and these are the current conditional uses permitted. Hotels, motels, and similar, multifamily residences, mixed-use residential above, commercial, retail, restaurants, grocery stores, appliance stores, convenience stores without fuel pumps, service, daycare, offices, banks, boat manufacturing, libraries, museums, art galleries, schools, colleges, universities, churches, synagogues, and temples, social fraternal clubs, indoor athletic facilities, movie theaters, publicly owned and operated outdoor recreation, assisted living progressive care and nursing homes, veterinarians, police stations, fire stations, and training facility, rescue squad, host offices, traditional fishing operations, dry cleaners and laundromats, municipal utility facilities, private utility facilities, electric substation, towers, bus station, taxi operation, commercial greenhouse or nursery, subdivisions, and supplementary uses, including adult entertainment establishments or sexually-oriented businesses, auto sales, auto repair, auto body, and boat sales and service, car or boat storage, self-service storage, marina, storage, telecom towers, automobile service stations, and convenience stores with fuel pumps, internet sweepstake establishments, farm and produce, craft distillery, and pawn shops. So, those are the uses currently shown in the ordinance. We've, of course, provided a statement, the applicant has had the requisite amount of time that's passed. I also need to note to the board, this is something that has been conveyed to us, that in terms of the legal side of things, the courts have held that tattooing and body art is a, that business is purely expressive conduct, fully protected by the First Amendment, and certainly have the case law to back that up, including the most recent Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision on this matter. So, at this time, the board has before it, it is, this is an item for action, and it has gone through the appropriate process and is now up to the will of the board.
Christine, did you ask to favor or not?
No.
Okay. I just want to make clear. All right. What did the planning board recommend, James? Or do you?
I don't have their actual motion in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That was from a prior mayor, but among the recommendations was to hold a public hearing, which has been done by this Board of Commissioners in accordance with the applicable law.
Well, the feeling of the board is to move on.
Well, I mean, I remember when-
I'm just making everything very clear, I'm not, I don't vote.
Right, right. And I remember when we had to vote for the internet sweepstakes machines, and, you know, I'm not a fan of that, I don't gamble, but I don't hold it against those that do, and I feel the same way about tattoos. You know, we have adult entertainment as a conditional use in B2, you know, along with some other things that I maybe don't want to see in town, but maybe are in town. So, I think, you know, I think B2, in my mind, may be the appropriate place if there were to be a tattoo parlor. I don't really care to see it in, excuse me, in B1. So, that's my, you know, and from the people that I've talked with, I think that B2 is the place.
Huh?
Being that we have to allow it.
Is it allowed in B2 already? Is that part of the adult entertainment?
Richie, you want to say something?
I concur with the proceeding, Ms.
Okay. Anyone else want to say anything?
Well, normally, we have a motion for discussion.
I'm giving everybody a chance. Well, okay, we'll have the most right. Somebody make the motion.
I'll make the motion to allow tattoo parlors as a conditional use in B2.
Is it second?
Second.
Second, motion by Christine, second by Richie, that we allow tattoo parlors in B2. I thought you wanted to have a discussion.
No, that's normally our process, we usually-
That is a process, is there any question?
No, we've already discussed.
This will amend the land use plan.
Do what?
Can you address that for us?
Yes.
So, the second piece, whenever you amend your zoning ordinance, the general statutes require you to make a, the statement of certification about its compliance with your land use plan or its non-compliance with your land use plan. So, if you want to proceed forward, the town manager's provided you with the pro, you know, approve or deny statements, and those need to be a part of your motion if you were to, if you were to proceed with approval or denial. So, before we vote, I ask Commissioner Walker to amend her motion to include that statement about the, how it complies with the land use plan, or in this case, it will change slightly the way it is.
Okay, okay. Then, I would move to approve a zoning text amendment 2019-02Z, Section 8542, to allow a tattoo parlor as a conditional use in the B2 General Business District. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160A-383, this approval is also deemed an amendment to the land use plan. The change in conditions taken into account by the governing board include recent court decisions indicating tattoos or body art are protected as First Amendment freedom of expression. This action is reasonable and in the public interest to ensure the town zoning ordinance does not conflict with a use protected under the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States.
Second.
All right. Now, we have a motion, amended a motion by Christine, as read, seconded by Richie Burke. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, seem to have it, motion carries.
Next up on the agenda, Section 8, New Business, and these are items for action. Number A on this is discussion and consideration of setting a public hearing for rezoning of 604 Sir Walter Raleigh Street from R5 to R2M. In this case, the applicant is Ms. Zoila Torres, and this item, we'd be absolutely clear, this is not a zoning, a rezoning that is to be heard or considered by the board tonight. The only action is for the setting of a public hearing in accordance with Section 25 of the Town of Manio's zoning ordinance and applicable state law. So, in this case, the only, the only thing on the table is to set a public hearing for this matter.
Do we have a motion to set a public hearing?
Before I do that, I'll make a motion to send it back to the planning board, so they can provide us with a written recommendation, so we can make a better decision on this rezoning issue.
Let's see.
And then, I'll second, I'll second, I'll set a public hearing for November the 6th at 6:30 PM.
Should we kick it back to them, and then set a public hearing for the deal?
So, they can, so they give us a written recommendation.
Right.
They didn't do that.
No, okay, second.
A motion by Darrell that we send the-
Does that give-
Motion back to the planning board for clarification and a vote, a vote, Darrell, from the planning board, right?
Yeah.
Recommendation, and then, should go forth with the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion, and seconded by Richie. All right, all in favor of the motion, we've heard the motion, any discussion?
And that's enough time for them to meet and?
All right, well, I guess it would be a next planning board meeting. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, as have it, motion carries.
Next up on the agenda, this is, this is item number 8B. This is entitled Discussion and Consideration of Setting a Public Hearing for Text Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, Article 8, Section 8-2, Dimensional Requirements, F&amp;H. Now, the app, we'll go ahead, and this is in the same consideration as the prior one, in that the board is not taking action or considering the merits of the proposal tonight. Let me give a little bit of background, a little bit of background on this. So, in this case, it's talking-
And this is one you're talking about in Marsh's Life, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, item 8B on the agenda is Discussion and Consideration of Setting a Public Hearing for Text Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, Article 8, Section 8-2, Dimensional Requirements, F&amp;H, in which the request is to change height limitation from 36 to 44 feet for waterfront hotels, and to exclude waterfront hotels from the 20,000-square-foot maximum building area. The applicant is Mr. Sumit Gupta. As some background, the intention here is to provide daylight and transparency to this issue, as there has been significant community interest in this topic. This occurs in two primary ways. First, it is typical for an application to first see daylight when it appears on the agenda of the Planning and Zoning Board. However, the records indicate these meetings have relatively few employees. Therefore, by putting this application on the Board of Commissioners' agenda during its regular meeting, we can reach more people in the audience, plus, this meeting is televised, so that people who can't attend the meeting can view it on cable television or 24/7 on our YouTube channel. Second, this approach allows opportunities for the public to voice their opinion on this topic. Public comment was heard this evening, there will be public comment heard at the Planning and Zoning Board on October 8th next week, there'll be public comment heard at the Board of Commissioners meeting on October 16th, plus, there will be more public comment periods at future board meetings, and there will be, by law, at least one public hearing that is required to be held by the Board of Commissioners. So, the intention of this approach is to provide appropriate daylight and transparency while affording all stakeholders the opportunity to provide comments on the application. In doing so, we want to make sure we are in compliance with the applicable statutes, ordinances, and policies. A request for a zoning text amendment has been submitted by the applicant, and we owe this applicant due process on this request. The applicant will have review by the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Commissioners in accordance with town ordinances and state statutes, and this process will be done within the timeframe prescribed in the law. Now, there have been statements circulating indicating this approach does not conform with Section 25-3 of the zoning ordinance. Section 25-3 consists of only two sentences, and here they are. "All proposed amendments shall be referred to the Planning and Zoning Board for consideration and recommendation. At any time on any matter, the Planning and Zoning Board may call a public hearing on any matter." That's it. So, nowhere in the town ordinances does it, does it say that referrals to the planning and zoning must be made by staff, and they can't be made by the Board of Commissioners. Nowhere in the town's administrative policies for the planning department does it say that. And nowhere in the North Carolina general statutes does it say that staff has to make a direct recommendation, a direct referral to, and the Board of Commissioners cannot do so. In fact, the Board of Commissioners would have every right to refer an important planning matter directly to the Planning and Zoning Board. Because Section 25-3 of the zoning ordinance indicates the proposed amendments shall be referred to the Planning and Zoning Board, it is my recommendation that the Board of Commissioners make the referral to planning and zoning. Now, that's not the only thing that the Board of Commissioners is required by law to do in this case. Section 25-4 of the zoning ordinance requires that the Board of Commissioners shall set a public hearing in the future, so that the public may have another opportunity to provide comment on the proposed zoning text amendment. You may recall from Section 25.3 recited previously, that the Planning and Zoning Board may hold a public hearing, but it is not required by law to do so. However, it seems prudent to give the Planning and Zoning Board enough time to meet at least two times on this matter, so that they are afforded the opportunity to hold a public hearing, should they choose to do so. On a related note, the Board of Commissioners is not required to set the date tonight for the future public hearing. For example, the board could wait until next month to set the public hearing, and we just need to make sure that the hearing date is within the timeframe noted in the law, so that the applicant receives due process within the prescribed time limit. However, there would be an advantage to the general public by setting the date tonight, in that it would afford more notice and lead time for any person to make plans to attend the public hearing. It is my recommendation that the Board of Commissioners set a public hearing at a future date.
You see, we're not the enemy. This is going to be, take ample time, it's going to be open to everyone, it's not going to be rumored and gossip by a few people to get people out stirred up. You folks will be the final say on this issue, I can promise you.
You might try and ask?
No, go ahead. I went very clear that this, this thing got out of hand, and I know how, I know who. But, we're going to, we're going to be here for y'all, we're going to be here for Marsh's Light, we're going to be here for Saga, because it's the American way and the way it's going to be done. We're going to represent everybody, and we have not made our decision, as far as I know, it has not been discussed among no commissioner here. And what you're hearing out on the street is just not so. Go ahead.
Just to briefly address Mr. Ferring's comments, I don't represent Saga. I did not represent them when they acquired the property, and I was not the town attorney when this conditional use permit was put in place. All that said, the town manager and I have talked at length about this, and we're aware of Mr. Ferring's concerns and the public perception that there is bias or, you know, some sort of conflict coming from my chair. And for that reason, we don't feel that it is, it's fair to the applicant for their project to have any taint or any question about the fairness process if I'm involved. And for that reason, not because there's a conflict of interest, because I consulted with the state bar on that front, and they've confirmed that there is no conflict here, and there would be no issue with me continuing to represent the town, but out of fairness to the applicant, the town manager will indeed be hiring a consulting attorney to assist on this particular project, so that there is no question about fairness and transparency, and that all avenues are considered, both for the town and its citizens, and also the applicant. So, I hope that that assuages any concerns that anybody here tonight might have about my role in this process, because I certainly don't want to be a political football that hinders what is a very important project for the town, however it shakes up. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Let me assure, I'm going to make it very clear to everyone sitting here tonight, and all the residents of Manio, there'll be ample time for plenty of public hearing, nothing is doing, been done behind the scenes, under the table, and again, as long as I am the mayor, it'll be wide open to the public. I got nothing to hide. If you want to ask me about my past, I will tell you, and some of it's not pretty, but I will tell you, I promise you that, and I promise to keep my promise to you folks, that everything will be open and above board and out in the open, and that's all I'm going to say, and let's move on. Mr. Manager?
I'll move to refer the proposed text amendment to the Planning and Zoning Board for a written recommendation, and then set a public hearing on December 4th of the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Motion by Eddie Second, that we move this- Motion, motion by Eddie, second, that we move this thing on, back to the planning board and to start out from there, and that's, I'm gonna concise it. All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Ayes have it, let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 8C on the agenda is discussion and consideration of regulations for Shallow Bag Bay and setting a public hearing. This particular one is a pretty exciting development. For the Town of Manio, population 1,500, to have a local bill passed unanimously, unanimously, both by the North Carolina House of Representatives and the North Carolina State Senate, it's absolutely amazing. And this is something that has been a long part of the community conversation, but I use the word "community" specifically, because when this was first reported to the board, we talked about having community input on these regu, on any regulations that might be promulgated by the board. Now, we had set up a number of mechanisms, getting out both a, everything from a special email account, social media, as well as website, direct contact, as well as talk with folks. We've been getting input every way possible, and this is the first round. There will be, continue to be rounds for opportunities for people to have their, to have their say as to what should be regulated and what should not. And in fact, one of the things to be considered is possibly for public hearing. But, one of the things I promised this board is that with the, with the time we've had to gather these comments, we've had quite a few comments, so we'll be, we'll be sharing those with the group. Before we do so, let's clarify what Session Law 2019-108, based on House Bill 429, says. This is an act authorizing the Town of Manio to regulate navigable waters within its corporate limits, and adding certain described navigable waters to the corporate limits of the Town of Manio for that purpose. Now, basically, the General Assembly is saying that, that we are a lot, we are empowered to make, adopt, and enforce ordinances for the navigable waters within its municipal limits as they presently exist, and as they may be extended by law in the future, as to operation of boats and vessels, including restrictions concerning speed zones, no wake zones, and types of activities conducted on the navigable waters within the municipal limits of the municipality. Two, restrict the anchoring and mooring of boats and vessels as to location, and generally to regulate the anchoring and mooring of vessels within the navigable waters within the municipal limits of the municipality. Three, place and maintain channel aids and markers, anchoring aids and markers, and navigational aids and markers in conformity with the United States Aids to Navigation System and the rules of the Wildlife Resources Commission, as adopted for use on the waters of North Carolina pursuant to General Statute 75A-15C. Four, make all reasonable rules and regulations as it deems necessary for the safe and proper use of navigable waters within the municipal limits of the municipality for the occupants of boats, vessels, swimmers, and others using said navigable waters. And five, provide for the enforcement of ordinances adopted under the authority of this act in accordance with General Statute 160A-175. Now, it should also be noted, the next section does say, "In the event of conflict between any local ordinance adopted under the authority of this act and the rules or regulations of the Wildlife Resources Commission, the Department of Environmental Quality, the United States Coast Guard, or the United States Army Corps of Engineers, the state or federal rule or regulation shall supersede and prevail over the local ordinance to the extent of the conflict." So that's, that's what the law says, and it is now officially a law. Let me give you some, let me give you what we're hearing from the feedback from the members of community, and indicate, there were certain categories that came up over and over again, so I am consolidating some of those comments, so that you can see what areas are in favor of regulations. This is the area of regulation, the comments are in favor of regulatory action by the Board of Commissioners. One, derelict boats. Far and away, this was the number one vote getter, if you will. Twenty-one people in favor of regulation of derelict boats. Next, uses. This was also a hot topic, in particular, the jetpack use was called out with 11 people favoring regulation prohibiting this use. Three, navigational aids, markers and related, six people favor installation or maintenance of such markers or related items. Next, mooring. It was, kind of came into two parts. Limitation on time, 10 people favor limits on time for the mooring. And there was also the, another five people who favor limits on things like distance from docks, landmarks, the channel, et cetera. And the environment. This one came out, five different people favored regulations on pumpouts, making sure we don't have anything pumped out at sea, but we certainly have an existing pumpout station right there at the marina for use by anybody coming through. Now, there were also one particular area of comment, this was against regulatory action, and even though this was never an area that was ever under consideration by the board, I think it's important to have these voices heard as well. So, the area of regulation was fishing and crabbing. Two people noted, "Do not interfere with crab pots or fishing." Those, so those are comments against an area of regulation. Now, there are also some general comments, a little, that were maybe a little more difficult to categorize, but again, we want to make people's voices heard, so forgive me, but I will be reading these verbatim. Number, first one, "As residents of the Shallow Bag Bay Club community, we would like to ensure that the navigational waters within the confines of the Shallow Bag Bay Marina be included in this jurisdiction. The operation of boats and vessels, including restrictions concerning speed zones, no wake zones, dredging, and types of activities conducted on these waters within the municipal limits should extend into Shallow Bag Bay Marina. The placement and maintenance of channel markers and other navigational aids would also be beneficial. The rules developed for abandoned and derelict boats should also be applicable to the marina as well. It should be noted that it is critical that the existing uses, services of the Shallow Bag Bay Marina, which include but are not limited to fuel service, rental and sale slips, charter boats of various types for fishing, parasailing, dolphin tours, must be grandfathered as part of the town's ordinances." In closing, safe and proper use of all navigable waters within the municipal limits will be critical in ensuring that the intent of HB 429 is met. Including the Shallow Bag Bay Marina as part of that jurisdiction is key. Second area of comment, marina activity that is offensive to others, including blasting music that no one else wants to hear, pervasive smoking and cursing on the docks and boardwalks, unwarranted advertising for businesses as well as political issues and people, personal objects that obstruct access to boardwalk, unleashed dogs, excessive noise from both businesses and personal recreational activities in the bay, preferential treatment for boating businesses over individual boaters, pedestrians, and other non-commercial users of the bay. Three, my one request is to be sure to keep the area a good place for water skiing along the shoreline. Sometimes, when the winds are strong in the more open water, the shoreline of Shallow Bag Bay provides a good haven for these kinds of boating activities, tubing, skiing, et cetera. Next, mooring. A fine line should be drawn regarding mooring regulations. I believe long-term mooring in open water should be discouraged as it leads to the collection of derelict boats. These boats are not maintained and become hazards in storms. Placement of mooring balls could also become navigational hazards. On the other hand, the regulations should not discourage transient boaters from stopping in Manio. Boats kept at marinas or piers within Shallow Bag Bay should be maintained in a seaman-like manner. Next, environmental concerns. Boats entering Shallow Bag Bay should be required to have heads empty to holding tanks, not discharging overboard. Next, business usage. Businesses operating on or out of Shallow Bag Bay should not leave equipment moored overnight. Equipment should be properly docked daily at close of business. And last, as a former resident and boater, I am glad to see Manio get control of Shallow Bag Bay. I do urge restraint in setting up new rules. Abandoned boats, especially workboats securely affixed to and on the shore, can add to not detract from the scenic views. Those that sink and are abandoned are a hazard, and I remember one such sailboat that I used to have to watch for as it was mostly underwater at normal tides. Please do not interfere with those boaters who might take up anchorage for a day or two in the bay, but well out of the channels. The crab pots that are either set out or are allowed to drift in the channels are a hazard. But, a traveling boat anchored 100 yards off the shore is a picture op. I miss Manio exclamation point.
Okay. There you have it. Regulations for Shallow Bag Bay in book version. Now, we've got set a public hearing for the Shallow Bag Bay, a public hearing.
I mentioned to set a public hearing for November the 6th, board meeting, starting at 6:30 PM, when any proposed regulations for Shallow Bag Bay.
All right, second.
Second.
All right, motion by Darrell that we set a, a public hearing for regulations Shallow Bag Bay, November, that's first meeting in November anyhow. And second by Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we have need now to go in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item nine on the agenda, this is closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143. Dot 318 dot 11A6 for personnel matters.
Thank you, folks, for coming.
I'll make a motion to move into public hearing, I mean session, to discuss personnel reports.
Close session.
Close session. Can't hear. Second.
All right, motion by Hannah, seconded by Darrell, we go in closed session. We now declare ourselves in closed session, we'll go in the back room. All right, we declare ourselves out of closed session. I'm gonna ask a...
Need a motion to go back into open session?
Yeah. Let's have a motion, go back to open session.
Make a motion to enter open session.
A motion by Eddie, seconded by Richie, that we go back into open session. All approved, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're back in open session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 10 on the agenda, this is a section for comments from mayor and commissioners.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Let's talk down this end, Eddie?
I don't have anything either.
Hannah?
Well, the only thing I have is, is about what lady in the audience said about coming from Greenville and she couldn't get into Manio, because I got a call from one of our commissioners here in my home, and he couldn't get into the town, and then I got a call like five minutes after that, they couldn't get into the town, so apparently the stoplights where they're doing construction at Bowser Town Road and 64. Apparently, they haven't re-timed those lights, so people backing up all the way around CDS.
You notice they were working on, they, they had two trucks, they had two state trucks up, and that's probably what it was.
I saw those.
I don't know.
But I, I don't think they, they fixed the problem.
I got, I got, I got...
I saw those trucks.
I got held up two or three times.
Yeah, so...
I got a little something to say about that, and I'm probably feeling about half here, and if I do, I can't help it, but go ahead. Nancy?
I just wanted to thank the town manager for getting the Cormier-Bassnight Bridge on the inspection schedule, because it's never been done since '83.
Okay.
So, thank you for taking care of it.
Christine?
Um, I don't think so, I was looking over my notes.
I smell bacon.
Okay.
Darrell?
Our group, the P. Island Preservation Society, is a, holding a Freedman Serpent Heroes program at the Arts Council on October the 11th, which is the 123rd anniversary of the rescue of the E.S. Newman, in which they received their gold medals, that starts at seven o'clock at the old courthouse. And the next day, we're having a program down at Cotright Park called Pepsi Pride, which is our acronym for P. Island Preservation Society, Inc. Starts at 12 o'clock, it'll be a cookout, and we're also doing a unveiling of our new waysite exhibits with interpreters at the exhibit and talk about it once we unveil them. We got four new exhibits we're unveiling. We also are sponsoring a essay contest for the middle school and the high schools. First place receives a hundred dollar, $150 gift certificate. Second place receives a $75 gift certificate, and $50 for third place for both schools. We have quite a number of school kids who have submitted essays, and they'll, when they're, they'll, we have six judges, three for each school, and when they announce the winners of them, the winners will read their essays to the group, and then they receive their prizes. So everybody's invited, last one 12 to 3, at Cotright Park on October the 12th.
And what day was the courthouse?
11th.
11th.
Okay, Town Commons, real fast, you got an email, I think, from James that, Monday at Commissioner's meeting, there will be a, there's an item on there about a memorandum of understanding from the county to the town for a 20-year project for a dollar. And so far, we have not one penny in it. I know it might be popular, it might not be popular, I'm not gonna get into that, but it's done, everything's down, everything's movement, and I think it'll be an asset to this board, and I said, an asset to this board, what's happening there if we go ahead and fruition, and finish the project. It looks like funding is gonna be pretty good, we're gonna have to come up with some money, but the tourism board is gonna come up with right much money too, I think. And we have the total backing of the County Board of Commissioners, I mean, they're excited, so that don't usually happen. And I'll say this about tourism, and, and you know where I'm coming from, but, you know, Rocky Mount, Tarboro, the cities of the past in eastern North Carolina were the showplaces, they're dying. Thank goodness for the tourists and the traffic. Everybody would love to have our problem in eastern North Carolina, that we got a traffic problem. And that's all I'm gonna say to that. That's all I got to say. Anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
No, sir.
I think everybody's had their say.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Recession.
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, to workshop, recess till, when is the workshop?
16th.
16th.
16th at 4 o'clock?
Make a motion to recess to the, recess 16th.
All right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the planning board issue, did, did any of the commissioners want to bring that up?
Oh, 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 oh. Yeah, I was gonna word that. Do you want to hand it? Can you hand it, or Town Manager? Somebody needs to...
I mean, I, I'll try.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to word it or say it or nothing.
Well, it's, it's not a motion, right? It's not a motion, but...
It's an action.
The board, the board has been notified that Planning and Zoning Board member Griselle Ferring has missed two consecutive meetings, which automatically terminates her position on the board. And so, at this time, her seat is vacant, and we have instructed the town manager to accept nominations for her seat on the board.
Good job. It's a, do we need a motion? No, we don't need anything, we just need your recommendation. All right. Do we need to sap the rest of that? I mean...
No.
Okay, I'm just asking, I don't know.
I'm just...
I don't know.
No, I think, I think that was...
All right, just for information, all right.
Make a motion to recess till the 16th?
All right, motion recess till whenever is our second.
I'll keep my second.
All right, Hannah, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in recess session till whenever it is.